We're Tuesday, May 3rd, City Commission Work Session. Feels like a Monday. We'll call our meeting to order. And real quick, join me in wishing Commissioner Franny a happy birthday. Nikki, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nikki. All right, we've got some presentations this morning. And for anybody that might be here on behalf of our workshop item, the Artisan Incubator, that item has been continued to sometime in the future. Do we have a date?
I do not have a date.
Okay, all right then. So I just didn't want you all to sit in the audience the whole time waiting to hear that. We'll move on to our presentations. Our first presentation is Recognition of International Economic Development Week. And I will turn that over to Commissioner Franny.
Yes, I'm not sure who's coming up to accept us. Would it be Bob and Jeannie, both? Our gurus.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. It's actually yesterday, so.
Oh, you get two days. All week.
Yes, I'm taking the week. I'm taking the week. Okay. International Economic Development Week, May 9th through the 13th, 2022, with the quote "economic development touches all things," right? It's all about economics. Whereas economic development is a process that is strengthened by the critical partnership between economic development professionals and local government leadership to promote a shared vision for developing vibrant communities. And whereas economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by helping to create, retain, and expand jobs that sustain individuals and families, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And where, okay, they're trying to get in already to. Whereas in partnership with industries, educators, and other key allies, economic developers cultivate and nurture entrepreneurship and help secure the next generation of new businesses, foster an effective business climate, and meet the increasingly critical need for a skilled and competitive workforce. And whereas economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, and federal governments and public-private partnerships such as the Dunedin Chamber of Commerce, Dunedin Downtown Dunedin Merchants Association, Visit Dunedin, and a variety of other businesses, associations, and institutions. And whereas economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, support small businesses and entrepreneurs, and improve the quality of life in their regions. Now therefore, I, Maureen Mo-Franny, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Dunedin, Florida, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby designate May 9th through the 13th, 2022, as International Economic Development Week and urge all citizens to recognize the efforts of the Economic and Housing Development CRA Department and all our economic development partners and reaffirm the importance of business development. And that is it. And Bob, if you want to.
This obviously will be framed to go on the new city hall.
Before you make your comments, I'm just going to say that you two, I'm glad you both are up there, but you have a total team in your department. But you and Jeannie, you guys do a great job. And of course, Bob, you've been here a long, long time. Well, I shouldn't say it like that. Well, we've seen the improvements here. And just, it doesn't just happen. You know, it takes seeds, it takes a lot of nurturing. And you and you guys and the department do a great job. So just want to thank you and let you have a chance to say some things.
Oh, sorry, thank you. And Trevor would be here, but Trevor's out. So he's obviously an integral part of the team and makes downtown happen. And one, we are so thankful for the commitment, you know, from the City Commission and my boss across the city manager and all the staff really in the city contributes to all the things that we do. And I think a lot of people think economic development is business retention and expansion. And of course, we use that line, touches all things. You can see that in a very brief video coming up. But, you know, we're doing affordable housing, we're doing artistic bus shelters, we're doing infrastructure, we're doing parks. We're touching a lot of things with a whole group of staff and people that come into play. And of course, those other organizations, the merchants and the chambers. So it's nice to be able to make a difference. And we really appreciate all the support. Jeannie and Trevor, you know, I'm lucky to have two stars on my team. So these guys are fantastic. So I can't say enough things, good things about them. But communications, thanks to Sue Antonella and Justin and Seth. We have a quick little video for you. It's very short, just to kind of show what we're doing. And of course, we've got some big things coming up too, right? Some big projects. The Complete Streets on Skinner is one. And of course, we're looking at our great crosswalk coming up here soon. I promise you, when Doug was doing with lights, we want to see happen. I know it's been a long time waiting. So we've got a lot of good things happening. And again, thank you for all the commitment of you and the city manager toward what we do. So Justin, can you run that video for us? Oh, please, in the background, can you hear that?
In the city of Dunedin, economic development touches all things. We create a very fertile business and cultural environment that encourages and promotes private investment, business recruitment, business retention, as well as promoting tourism and things that improve the quality of life in the city of Dunedin for those that live, work, and play here.
Economic development improves the fabric of the community of Dunedin with complete streets, creating a safe environment for bicycles, pedestrians, and vehicles.
Economic development provides the resources for Dunedin's cultural and artistic aesthetics, which creates a sense of place that is uniquely Dunedin.
Economic development provides an environment for entrepreneurs to thrive.
That is the Dunedin vibe. It's the spirit of community working together.
Economic development touches all things. But most importantly, it's the economic engine that generates revenue to provide for world-class amenities and services for those that live, work, and play in the city of Dunedin, Florida.
And I know I mentioned it just quickly, Trevor wishes he was here. The one day he wouldn't want to miss would be this day. But he had a commitment he had to do. So, but anyway, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for all your hard work. Very good.
So if I could just say, that communications department's making everybody look good these days.
Thank God, right?
Yes, they are.
We are very proud of them as well. All right, next on our agenda is our National EMS Week proclamation. And I will turn that over to Commissioner Gow.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, the CRA is always a hard act to follow. But I think we can beat it with EMS.
You can beat everything with EMS.
Absolutely.
Come on up, everybody, come on.
Everybody, everybody.
Step forward, please, so we can see all of you.
Forward and me recognize.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Oh, my goodness.
We're in the right place right now for medical emergency.
Something happens, yeah, we're good.
I was gonna say, if something happens here today, this is the day. Get everybody to take care of it.
Thank you, guys, for all showing up.
Absolutely. EMS Week 2022. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rates of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services have grown to fulfill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Jeff Gow, by the virtue of the authority vested in me by the mayor of the city of Dunedin and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby designate the week of May 15th through the 22nd as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS: Rising to the Challenge and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the recognition. And Chief Zepeda is going to speak on us there. But I'd like to thank all of our folks behind us here, day in, day out. They're out there answering the calls when people have an emergency. So we're very proud of the work that they all do in Dunedin. Thank you.
I don't have a video.
That's okay. We see you in action.
Hey, we have time today, right?
We don't need no film.
No, thank you all. After the last couple of years, it feels good to be able to stand here and face-to-face to make this proclamation together. We've been through a lot: illness, pain, frustration, and unfortunately, loss. This year's EMS Week is titled Rising to the Challenge. And boy, have they. Since President Gerald Ford declared the first EMS Week in 1974, I believe EMS workers have been rising to the challenge every day. I believe we all know and appreciate what our first responders do for us day in and day out. But does anyone know what it takes to get here? In 1974, it was a very limited 400-hour program in select cities, and paramedics were referred to as an EMTP. Today, the state of Florida recognizes EMT and paramedic as separate certifications with different requirements. Both are college-level courses, earning an individual four-year degree if they wish. EMTs start with 110 hours of classroom, followed by at least 20 hours externship and 10 hours in the hospital. This will earn them about four credit hours in college. Paramedics, this is where the fun starts. Following EMT school and 20 hours of prerequisites, students begin a 12-month program where they endure over 700 hours of lecture, skills, and labs. Then they begin a minimum 540 hours of externship. If they want to go on to be a firefighter, well, that's another 492 hours at college or academy. So as you can see, it's a true commitment for hopefully a long career. These caring, motivated, and courageous people rise to the challenge at every turn and are true professionals in the week, every week of the year. Thank you for taking the time to recognize us. And may y'all have a productive and good day.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your service to this community. We truly appreciate it.
Commissioner, before they leave, can I ask them to stay up here?
Sure.
I think we would all like for them to stay up. I'm going to be doing the water safety.
The what?
The Water Safety Month of 2022. Do you mind? And Vince, Vince?
Alicia.
Would you bring all your entire staff up here? Because this is really important stuff. And this is really important to us as a coastal city. In fact, I was even going to suggest maybe everybody down there. I'm here to read the Water Safety Month 2022. And the safety side includes not only prevention, but then action when it's required. And so, if I may, whereas the city of Dunedin is committed to ensuring the safety of all residents and visitors to our great city. And whereas residents and tourists alike enjoy our city's natural water resources and man-made recreational water facilities. And whereas swimming and aqua, aquatic-related activities play a vital role in good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all residents and visitors. And whereas the city, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reports that annually, there are an estimated 3,960 fatal unintentional drownings, including boating-related drowning, averaging 11 drowning deaths per day, and 8,080 non-fatal drownings, averaging 22 non-fatal drownings per day. And whereas more children ages 1 through 4 die from drowning than any other cause of death except for birth defects. And for children ages 1 through 14, drowning is the second-leading cause of unintentional injury death after motor vehicle crashes. Whereas comprehensive water safety education is essential for everyone, including children, parents, and caregivers, to be aware of water safety rules and programs to help prevent drownings and recreational water-related injuries. And whereas basic water safety tips include always having adult supervision of children, providing children's swimming lessons at a young age, installing barriers when a child or vulnerable adult has uninterrupted access to a body of water. And everyone, especially caregivers, should learn CPR and have safety equipment, such as emergency flotation devices. And whereas Water Safety Month in Dunedin is an opportunity to promote water safety as well as provide education in our coastal community regarding prevention of recreational water-related injuries, illnesses, and deaths. Now therefore, I, John Torniger, by the virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the city of Dunedin, Florida, and on behalf of the entire City Commission, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Water Safety Month in Dunedin and encourage all residents to take the pledge to be safe swimmers and make water safety a priority. And as I mentioned, as I mentioned, for the entire team that's up here, we have, we have two situations. One where these, these folks do it all. They try to make sure these people are, that our entire residents and those that are visiting us that are enjoying some of the man, particularly the man-made, learn how to do some of these things. And you all, I just heard of another one where you were all involved in for a rescue. So we really appreciate what you do in, in support of our residents and our visitors for the, for the water situation here in Dunedin in a wonderful coastal city that we are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission, for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you about Water Safety Month. My name is Alicia Castrocone, Program Coordinator. And with me is Stephanie Kensinger, the Head Lifeguard, and Department Director, Vince Gizi. I would like to share with you a brief slideshow of some of our water safety accomplishments as we are very interested in education and safety and all those good things. So. It might work. So this is the Every Child a Swimmer Program. We started this program back in 2009 with the Kiwanis Club of Dunedin. And up to this year, we have served 1,200 children. So they have been trained to be safe in and around the water. And their families have been given water safety education measures as well. And you can see some other pretty photos. And then that one was during the pandemic time where we had to wear the little face shields. That was a fun time. This is the Florida Sheriff's Youth Ranch. We work with them whenever they're available to have us there. And we teach their, I guess, campers. We teach classes for them. And so far, we've taught over 100 children how to swim there, so. So during the pandemic, we were not able to do the Every Child a Swimmer Program. So we thought, you know what? We're going to do something else. With the rising numbers of drowning rates during that time, we said, you know what, something has to be done. So we created the Child Safety Drive-Thru, where they drive through the, the old fire station, and they're fitted for life jackets. That was actually a very successful event. We fitted 212 children with life jackets. So that hopefully kept them safe. Then we also made sure that families went home with water safety information as well. You can see I'm there with a poster. And throughout their drive, before they come up and around, was a lot of water safety posters that we had made so they could see them, so. And you can see all the hard work that went involved in that. And then there's the happy faces. Then this year, we decided, okay, let's pop up all over Dunedin, why don't we? So we created six or seven different locations throughout Dunedin where we popped up. And we fitted about 100 children with life jackets and gave out door alarms, information about being safe in and around the water, those types of things. And there's the happy faces. Very excited. That was at Weaver Park there. This is in downtown by the museum. So see, these are some of the books that we would give out in our safety bags. So Josh the Otter is, really emphasizes those, for those that are on the spectrum. It helps teach families that those that are on the spectrum, you know, have a higher incident of going towards the water because it attracts them. So this book is really good for those who do have children in that area. The Swim Safer Little Seals was actually, it's a really illustrated book, really nice. Goes over a lot of the rules and things, especially not going near the water. This book, this is Stewie the Duck Learns to Swim. This is a very special book to me because it was written by the family who lost a child in 1989. So little Stewie is the little duck that teaches all the things that we can learn to be safe in and around the water. So that was a very special one to me. And then this, this is the Hot Little Water Watcher Badge, which I'm going to talk about. We have some educational pieces that I wanted to share regarding how to be safe in and around the water. So the first one is Layers of Protection. So if you have a pool, you want to have a fence bordering that pool. And then you want to have a pool top lock so that the little ones can't reach it. And then you want to have a pool top lock so that the little ones can't reach it. You also want to make sure that there's nothing in the area so the kids don't climb and unlock it as well. And then keeping items out of the pool. So if there's toys in the pool, it's going to attract children to that water and they're going to find a way to get there even if you have a pool top lock. So just take those things out so they aren't attracted. Also have a first aid kit. In the first aid kit, you want to have it labeled in a very accessible location, have a CPR mask and rescue ready card in case CPR has to be performed until EMS arrive and take over. If you'd like to take a CPR class, you're welcome to do so by going to redcross.org. The Water Watcher Badge, which everyone should have. This Water Watcher Badge, during times of swim, while wearing the badge, undivided attention should be given if you or other parents are in, you know, like it's a party or something, create shifts. Each parent while wearing the badge has to be free of conversation, phone and other distractions during their shift. When the shift is over and the next parent takes over, discuss any issues noted or if a child is getting tired. So if anyone would like a free Water Watcher Badge, they can come see us at Highlander Pool. We have hundreds of them that we can give out to you. Then next would be educating the families on water safety. At times, other family members are watching the children. It could be the grandparents, aunts, uncles. It is important that you educate them on water safety and explain the layers of protection if they do have a pool. Make sure they also have a well-stocked first aid kit and understand the Water Watcher Badge initiative. Get swim lessons. That's super important. Not only will it teach children the skills of swimming, but it also teaches them how to be safe and around the water. Highlander Pool is offering swim lessons for ages six months to adult. We also offer the Infant Survival Resources with our instructor, Jan Orwick. So there's no excuse to get a swim lesson with us. And then lastly, when you're out and about, use proper flotation, okay? The best flotation devices for children are the ones that are Coast Guard approved. All-approved life jackets or puddle jumpers will have the Coast Guard approved emblem or statement on the device. And with those, those things, you should have a fantastic swim season. Thank you.
Great job, guys. Thank you. Thank you so much for protecting our kids.
I love the books.
Mm-hmm.
I love that, you know, you can learn through reading your books too, that sort of intersection of safety and literature.
I think, you know, Alicia, you know, it sends a message about how important our pool plays. You know, water's everywhere. Kids are going to get drawn to it. We're a part of making sure we're promoting swimming and kids knowing what they're doing and educating parents because, you know, the drownings are happening all the time. And it's, I, I have a pool and it's terrifying when kids are there. And you just want to be able to do things right. But I think in the core of our community, we've got a pool where we're teaching, you know, so we can prevent it. That's the key.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
And yes, that's a plug for our new pool.
Okay, now's the time for citizen input. Anybody wishing to come forward and speak to any item that is not already on the agenda, please feel free to do so. Seeing or hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda where we have the approval of minutes, board and committee appointments to arts and culture, board of finance, local planning and public safety. Are there any items to be pulled? Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Vice Mayor and Commissioner Gow, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Then we'll move to our action items. Our first item is Resolution 2208, adopting the restated, restarted City of Dunedin Defined Contribution Plan. Nikki, would you please read that by title only?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution 2208, a resolution of the City of, Commission of the City of Dunedin, adopting the restated City of Dunedin Defined Contribution Plan, repealing all resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. This has been reading of Resolution 2208 by title only.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Franny and Vice Mayor Kynes, thank you. Teresa.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. Happy Public Service Recognition Week. Thank you all for your service. Just wanted, every Resolution 2208, based as our city attorney has said, is required by the Internal Revenue Service that all retirement plans are approved by them on a regular basis. So we have a 401A Defined Contribution Plan for our employees and we have sent it to our attorney, Lowell Walters, for review and he put together the resolution. He, we have an IRS determination letter that is part of the packet that basically says that our plan is approved as deformed. Any questions?
Questions for Teresa?
Um, you know, I, I, I read this and it made my head spin. So, you know, my bottom line was, okay, what's the bottom line here? Because it's a lot of documentation. Totally understanding you have to conform to the IRS. So I think, and you can tell me, I think that the bottom line is, it was revised to clarify that the forfeiture of invested city contributions to an employer's retirement plan is immediate upon termination and the prior service credit will not count if an employee is rehired more than three years after termination of employment. I think that's the, the most important. Is that correct?
Very good, Commissioner. Yes. Vice Mayor, sorry. Yes, it is.
Go, all right.
So the administrative process is that if an employee is not vested in the plan, and that's at least five years of service, that if they leave employment, the, the money that the city has contributed, contributed to their plan will be forfeited and go back to our plan. And then if we sort of, you know, decided that our employees, we do have employees that come back from time to time. So we wanted to clarify that if an employee comes back within three years of employment, they would not have that money that they lost if they weren't already vested, but they would be able to credit the years of service that they had before they left.
If it's within.
Towards, within three years, yes.
Well, I know Mo will have much better questions here. This is her bailiwick. So.
I actually don't have any, you know, familiar with the plan and seems like logical change and clarification. So, so yeah, I'm sorry to disappoint you, but no, I'm, I'm good with this.
I was all ready for the hour.
I'm good with this.
I was, I was settling in.
No, I'm, I'm good with this. When we get our pay, pay plan reviewed.
Oh, yeah.
You'd be ready for that, but not this.
Oh, my goodness.
Sorry.
Anybody else with a question? Okay, this is public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak to this item, please feel free to do so. Seeing or hearing none, we'll come back to the commission. Any final comments from anyone?
Nope.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Gow?
Aye.
Commissioner Torga?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kynes?
Aye.
Commissioner Franny?
Aye.
Mayor Bishalsky?
Aye, and that motion passes unanimously. Sorry, I just got in from vacation last night. I'm still kind of foggy.
I could make some additional comments if you want me to.
No, that's okay.
I was ready.
All right. Thank you, Teresa. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, now we have the Edgewater Drive Advisory Committee continuance. And whoever else, come on down. This is something we do every three years with every committee, so nothing unusual. I'll turn it over to you.
All right, and good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Administrator, Frances Leongshar, planner too, for the City of Dunedin. And I'm also the staff liaison to this wonderful advisor committee, the Edgewater Drive Advisor Committee. And here we have this morning is C.C. Lasky, our Chair of the Committee, as well as Mary Ellen Tilly, that would like to present some updates of what the committee has done in the past year. But as you have mentioned, Mayor, this is an item for the continuance of the advisory committee. So I'll let C.C. take it away.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me be here.
You're welcome.
Very lucky to be the Chair of this committee. We're very lucky to work with Francis. I have to put that out. She's amazing, in case you didn't know. We spent a lot of last year, quite frankly, speaking to issues of safety and traffic issues on Edgewater Drive. While that's not our whole charter, circumstances just seem to warrant that that be our focus. Pleased to say that Francis helped us. The mayor also came. We were lucky to have Whit Blanton from Forward Pinellas. So we, we do feel very supported by the official people. To the end of, to that end of safety, we respectfully advised throughout the year that this speed limit on the full length of Edgewater Drive be reduced to 30 miles per hour south all the way to Union Street. The break at Lockley is creating a bit of a speed-up opportunity. People see the change and they, they're just primed a whiz. I have the great fortune to live right there and I'm, and I love living there, but I also get to see a lot of the speeding and passing, unfortunately. We also would hope that permanent "your speed is" signs be placed on the drive in, you know, reasonable places. We want to recognize that when with, in, in working with Teresa Smalling, when I, when I've communicated with her, when she has arranged for Pinellas County Sheriff to come, it's amazing. It makes a huge difference. And so we hope that the city can continue to work with the Sheriff's Department to enhance enforcement of speed limits and the no passing laws because when they are there, they are a very effective presence and we understand they can't live there. They, they have a whole county to patrol. We also made motions regarding the placement of stop signs on Bell Trees at Citrus, Bell Trees in Broadway and Florida, Broadway and Orangewood, due to concerns about overflow traffic from Edgewater Drive affecting those streets. And we were told that the traffic engineer went out and took a look and didn't feel that stop signs were warranted at this time. And, you know, respectfully, we would bring forward that perhaps we do need to take another look at that considering the accident that just occurred with a bicyclist on, on Broadway and Orangewood, unfortunately. I don't know many details about it. I'm not trying to capitalize on someone's misfortune. I just simply want to point out that it was a dangerous intersection that the committee identified and sadly, we were right. And we, we have the same fears for Edgewater Drive, which the mayor also shares. I know she's spoken with us about it. And the committee, we, we'd like to brag a little bit. We feel like we pushed the envelope on those crosswalks. We, we know they were part of the FDOT plan, I don't know, for 2023? And, and we kind of banged on the table a little bit and they're there now and I, we understand the, the overlay to make them a little more visible is coming as well. They're really working well and we really appreciate it. And for the future, we would like to get back to looking at the environment of the linear park and the trimming of the mangroves and our trash collection that we've organized before. And we'd also, and I will write an official letter, but we would also love to be part of complete streets. Perhaps Bell Trees could be part of complete streets and we could look at the whole picture. We're here to help in any way and we thank you for your support and we hope you'll let us keep doing what we think is important work. And any questions? Happy to answer them.
Well, you know, I, I was wondering, have you, do you have any feel whether the crosswalks help to slow anything down? I see people go across and sometimes I see, you know, I see a lot of good people that stop and then I see some really angry people that try to go on or that honk.
Yeah.
I mean, because I see it every day. So I, I'm wondering, first of all, I guess, when we might get the brick overlay? Because we were going to get the pavement overlay in then. Do you, do we know when that's in the budget?
I'm not sure. I'd have to check and get back to you.
But I'm just wondering, does that sort of, does it ameliorate anything? I mean, does it help when people know that there are coming up to areas where people, there are crosswalk areas?
So my anecdotal observation from the, at the Bell Trees Edgewater, you know, I can, you know, walking the pups and everything and going up and down is, is the same as yours. It's very effective for some drivers and others do speed through and seem, I don't know, at best oblivious and at worst on purpose speeding up. I, what I observe is people are very cautious about trusting that the lights are working. I know I am. I mean, I, I wait till I'm really conscious that that car's slowing down. I would hope that at least for people who are regularly using the drive, that it is a visual constant reminder that this is a pedestrian area as well as a dry, a commute route. But I, yeah, I don't know. I haven't done a scientific, I haven't, I haven't talked to people about it generally, except for my own neighbors. So it would be interesting to maybe talk with people that are staying at the Fenway, taking a walk. My husband loves to chat when he's out in the yard. I'll tell him to start.
Yeah, tell him to go and chat.
Talks to everybody. My apologies if you're one of them.
No, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
And Mayor, Paul can fill us in on the brick, if you, if you don't mind.
Morning, Commissioner. Paul Sannick, Public Works Director. Actually, it's something we discussed yesterday. So it's definitely on our radar. One of the things, and actually I drove the Causeway last night because they're going to be pulling up our, our brick imprints there and then putting down the, the new crosswalks and then we're going to come back in and add the brick to those as well. Even though they'd stated to us they were going to start on the Causeway on April 18th, there is no work that has been done out there yet. So we, you know, economy of scale, we want to get all the ones that we have on, on Edgewater and Bay Shore and those ones out and the Causeway done at the same time. So as soon as they're ready, whether it's the end of this fiscal year, the beginning of next fiscal, fiscal year, we're going to get them all done at one time.
Sooner.
I'm.
Sooner rather than later.
Right now, we're at the, you know, the mercy of the county and for when they're going to be doing, yeah, their work out there.
But still, if, if they, if we keep pushing and they know it's really important to do the Causeway also, I mean, the entire, it, it needs to have, be synchronized, you know, with design.
Yes, absolutely. And we've been working with them. So it's just, like, we have our own pavement management program and, and, you know, we spend a lot of money on that and that's big for the city. It's huge for the county. So they have, you know, one contractor, multiple crews working throughout the county. So kind of just whenever we're up on the plate, they're going to do the work. I also know they had some supply chain issues as well and that's why we've been put off. And I have not been given a, a date for when they're going to be back out to actually start working on the Causeway. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, any other questions for these ladies?
No, but I just want to thank you guys. I mean, obviously, Edgewater's a really important corridor for us, totally on board with the 30 mile per hour and you have no better advocate because she is a dog with a bone when she goes after something.
What's working on it?
I know. I know. Thank you so much. Yeah.
But thanks for all you're doing. Again, it's, it's a really important corridor.
It's a privilege to live on Edgewater Drive. It really is. Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so we do need a motion to extend the Edgewater Drive Advisory Committee?
So moved.
Second.
Vice Mayor and Commissioner Torga, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, and then we have the proposed agenda. Hopefully everybody had a chance to take a look at that.
I did and I, I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
I was just really happy to see the Clearwater St. Joseph Sound and our local agreement with Swift Mud. Is that been, I mean, I know we don't, it's coming forward, but I'm really happy in it. Is that the longstanding look at how the different tributaries come out and fall into the St. Josephs and Clearwater Harbor, like Curlo Creek?
I'm glad Paul showed up today.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm thrilled to see it on there. I mean, we're.
Yeah, good morning again. And yes, it is. You know, it's, it's the ongoing research and data collection that we're doing.
That's great.
For our impaired waters. So it's a $400,000 grant, well, $400,000 project. $200,000 of that is from Swift Mud. The other $200,000 is from Pinellas County, I think at $85,000, and then a number of us cities that have joined in with them to do that work. So two weeks from today, actually, it'll be on consent agenda, so maybe this is a better time to talk about it.
But that's very exciting.
So no, we're, we're excited for that. And once again, working with Pinellas County, it's, you know, we're all part of one watershed, so the MS4. So this is very important for us and Clearwater Harbor and St. Joseph's Sound.
Okay, very good.
Can I just ask a quick question since Paul, since you're up there? That involves the intercoastal, correct?
Yes, yes.
And that would be, that's how we end up getting, if there's any monies that are going to be allocated to the intercoastal, then in our particular county, it comes from that, it would come from that relationship, and/or by city, I would guess.
Correct, correct. And since we're part of the, you know, the, the whole MS4 for, throughout the county as well, so, you know, it kind of comes and sits with the county, and, and then it gets spread out among all of us municipalities, depending on what water body we're on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, can I have a motion to?
I was just gonna, I mean, better now than somewhere, some other time, but I noticed that the Senior Hall of Fame actual awards breakfast is like May 11th. And I think most of us are probably going to the Chamber event that morning.
Is that the breakfast?
Yeah. Breakfast, and, which actually, I think they time out. I already RSVP'd to go to the Fallen Heroes event that the sheriff's doing, because he's got a new memorial up there. So, I was, I was sorry they were in conflict. I don't know, I was gonna call.
May 11th.
Yeah.
Busy morning.
Yeah.
Where's the Fallen Heroes?
It's right at the main Almerton place, and they've done a lot of work. It's gonna be a very, very nice memorial type.
I am going to, I'm going to the breakfast.
And then the breakfast is at Mace's?
Right after the, right, right after the breakfast is the Hall of Fame. So, obviously, you know, just want to make sure we got representation at.
I'll go to the Hall of Fame, and then I'll go to Mace's. I'll go to the.
I'm going to go to the breakfast, because I can do both. But I'm going, I've already RSVP'd for Fallen Heroes, so you have to.
I'll go to the Hall of Fame.
That's probably what I'll do, and then I have to go to Forward Pinellas.
Yeah, so we'll have.
All right, so we'll have every, please, you know, I hate to miss the Hall of Fame thing, but the Fallen Heroes thing's going to be very important as well.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some, second.
Whatever.
Okay, Vice Mayor and Commissioner Franny, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Jennifer, did you want to give us an update on this postponement?
Yeah, the Artisan Incubator, the, there is a discussion regarding the location of the parking spaces. And the, it doesn't impact the deal structure itself, which is what we really wanted to talk to the commission about, but it does impact ultimately whether or not they enter into an agreement. First of all, we entered an agreement with, with Mr. Davis, and then with our tenants as well, which is Archangels and the DFAC. So, I wasn't really prepared, didn't really want to bring you the deal structure without having at least a verbal consensus, as far as that parking goes. I'm looking at the workshop schedule, and you are busy all the way through July with some, some, you know, pretty big items. So, we're going to have to sit down with them and, and work that out.
Can we make sure that we get the whole idea of a privacy fence that blocks that stuff in the back or something? We need that.
So, we'll talk to, we'll talk to Mr. Davis about that. That's not required by code. So, it is going to be something over and above, but we'll definitely talk to Mr. Davis about that.
You mean the privacy fence at the north?
So, you can see recreational vehicles there, and you're not supposed to see recreational vehicles. They're supposed to be behind a blocking fence.
And they're behind a fence, right.
And they're behind a fence, but it's not a view-blocking fence. I mean, I think that was the intent of our, our rule.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have a look at it, Mayor.
Yeah.
Convey that to them.
It's the same with his neighbor next door, with the boat, and the boat trailer, which is still there, by the way.
How do I get in trouble?
I don't know.
You're not in trouble. They are. I just, you know, every time I come down there, it's such a revitalized corridor, and you see junk and junk, you know. I don't want to see it.
Okay.
And you're the city manager, you're always in trouble. I mean, come on, that's the way it is.
That's right.
You know, and the bike people have done such a great job, and then you have junk. Get rid of it. Cover it up, put a fence up, do something.
How about a tarp?
No, that's not good enough.
I'm just teasing, just to make you mad.
Okay, so we need to, are we, are we, we don't have a date certain, so you don't do postponements, just table it for now?
Yeah, it's not advertised, so we don't need a date certain.
Okay, so, can I, can I have a motion to table it?
I'll table. I wish, I hope that we can, because it ends in, in September, so we're going to have to.
So, per, per the agreement, we give, need to give them three months' notice, so we would need to know at the end of June.
Okay.
Second.
So, June's good. That's what, that's what our.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Kynes and, Commissioner, Vice Mayor Kynes and Commissioner Twanga, okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, did not get notified of any commission discussion items. So, city clerks update anything? I didn't hear from you. Anything from city manager and?
I do, just really quickly, Mayor. I want to call your attention to the fact that the applications are open for the not-for-profits.
I was.
American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Where is it online?
So, it's online.
Because somebody was looking yesterday and couldn't find it.
It's online at denedin.gov.com. It's right on our, our landing page.
On the front page.
Yep, you just scroll down, and you hit on American Rescue Plan Act funding. So, it, it is open until June 1st, when we close. So, it's open for a month, just under a month. We actually have this upcoming Friday at 9 o'clock, so that's May 6th at 9 o'clock, a webinar. And Whit O'Brien, who is our consultant on the American Rescue Plan Act funding, and Les Tyler, will be conveying the parameters of, of the program that we've put together. So, the, I think that's going to be very helpful for people to, to listen to that webinar, if they're able to. It'll be recorded, they can access it anytime as well thereafter.
Sure.
So, thank you, Mayor. That's all I had.
Okay, city attorney, anything?
You know, I didn't have one until last night. So, since we have a little bit of time, you all likely saw that the Supreme Court decision came down about the city of Boston's flagpole policy, and how they did not guard their flagpole as a non-public public forum. So, we are going to be issuing, you know, looking at, making sure that there's, if there's any city policies that need to be strengthened. My understanding is the city's practices are very different. So, understanding that all of these cases are usually very fact-driven. So, my understanding is the facts are different, but the decision just came out last night. So, we are reviewing it, and the memorandum on that case, as well as a recent sign case out of the city of Austin, will come to you all, along with the legislative updates in mid-May. So, we're finalizing those now. Thanks for the few minutes. I just thought I would let you all know.
Are you concerned about it?
I think I do, oh, I've, I've tried to just summarize my, I think these are very heavily fact-driven inquiries, and my understanding at this point is, it means it's based on what exactly Boston was doing.
Very specific.
My understanding is what, what, what the Denedin's practices are different.
So, my takeaway, even though, so I can, I'll say it not legally, I saw it. I was concerned, because one of the things it talked about was pride flags, and we're ready to put our pride flag up in June. But it did sound like, you know, they had potentially, who knows, I know you're going to look into that, you know, somewhat of a more liberal practice of different groups being able to fly different flags, et cetera. And, and so I think they used the term, you know, didn't really have much control over it, so everybody did different things, and then they tried to stop the church from doing it. That's my takeaway from what I read very briefly, but, but I appreciate that, because my takeaway too was, it was very different, that we, that we don't have that type of a liberal practice. But again, I'm glad you're on top of that. I was going to ask you about it. I was concerned about it.
My, my, I thought, so yes, Mayor, that would be my, my understanding is that the, the practices that the city follows are different than Boston, but for me to actually go down and dig into the city's policies, that's why we're going to prepare that memorandum, and make sure that if there are any changes or tweaks or adjustments, we're able to make them, so.
I don't think we have any written policy.
I don't think, well, and I, it's not even, it's bigger than that, so, but, right, exactly.
And what was the second one, Nikki?
There was a sign code case out of the city of Austin that actually gave a little bit more understanding to the Reed decision that came down about content regulation, and actually said, you know, there was, there was a very, very stringent reading that an onsite, specifying whether a sign was onsite or offsite, was content-based, because the tests that people had been applying since the Reed decision was if you have to read the sign to apply the code, then it's content-based. So, if you have to read a sign to determine whether it's onsite, people challenged that as a content-based regulation. And actually, the court in that case said, don't be ridiculous. We can specify onsite and offsite. That's specifying a location, not the content of the sign. So, there was a little bit of reasonableness that sort of injected back into that, which is helpful for the project that we're beginning to prepare to bring back to your attention and looking at your sign code. So, thought we'd let you all know about the update in that case, too.
And as you know, we hear a lot about that sign at the laundromat.
Oh, yes. Even my grandchildren notice that.
Which is the exact people we don't want to notice that sign. Okay.
We have all kinds of colorful political speech.
We live in interesting times.
We do.
Every day. Well, thank you, Mayor, for some unplanned time, but those, those developments did just happen, so.
No, I'm glad you brought that up, because I, I saw it immediately. It popped up, and I was, I was concerned.
Yeah, that's really very interesting, new.
Mm-hmm. All righty, Commissioner comments. We'll start with you, Vice Mayor. Anything on your liaison position?
Well, I just wanted to thank the Scottish American Society. They did such a beautiful job with the, their special thing for the Ukraine.
And thank you so much.
Oh, I loved it. And little Olivia went up on stage with me, and she's very shy, so I was so proud of her that she would do that. And I, I know I saw, I saw all of you all there. I think you were out of town, but I did see everyone there.
We called her in, though, when it was raining.
Yeah. The only sad thing, because they worked so hard, and people were so enjoying it, and unfortunately, the rain came, I think, right around 5:00, and sort of, right around, because I was there, or just 15 minutes earlier before the rain hit. So, anyway, all congratulations, and thank you to all the people that came out. I think it just showed the kindness and compassion that people feel, and that they truly do grieve for the Ukraine.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to say that.
Anything else?
Oh, oh, I had one other thing, sorry. And yesterday, I went to the K through 12 art exhibit, the Denedin Showcase.
Nice.
And they were very kind, and they said, you began it many years ago, that you started it at the community center. It was packed. I mean, they were so excited with their artists, and it, some beautiful work. So, if you have a chance, go down and see in the children's art museum, there is the whole gallery full of their works, and just very talented kids, such excited parents, and fabulous art teachers. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Nothing?
Nothing?
Anything for liaisons?
I'm going to ask a question of the city manager, right? I'm not, I'm trying to get clear on this stuff. So, with the Edgewater Drive issue, committee coming up, what, what's the status on the setback? You know, the, the ability to do the setbacks to the houses? And I know we were working on that. Do we know?
Well, the, so, so the issue is that, that there's a setback in our code, and there's a setback that's required on the underlying plat. The city doesn't enforce plat requirements. It's, it's a private covenant on the property, so we would enforce the setback that's in our code. Most of those, most of those houses obviously have built to the setback on the underlying plat. So, it would be something that we would have to either incorporate it in our code, and certainly work with anybody who's building a home at that point, to call that, that underlying requirement to, to their attention.
And if I may, there's also one more thing we could do. And, and of course, Nikki, you'd have to look at this, but, you know, if, if people along Edgewater Drive that have those very deep front, which is not only, you know, people say, well, it's really nice, because you have these deep setbacks, but it's also resiliency. If you think about right across the street, you have, you know, the linear park and the water. But I think it voluntarily, the people that have the, the deep setbacks could voluntarily put in their instrument of, of their deed or whatever, that it is their wish that that be maintained. And that's a voluntary action. That's, I mean, Nikki, you have to look that up and see someone, another attorney told me that. So, that we could voluntarily say, if my house is sold, if it is torn down, I, I'm going to put it in my deed, that I will, that this, this will sort of run with the land, but it's voluntarily, each person would have to do it.
Yeah, that's not, that's interesting, but that's not a city question.
Right, right.
The city can't require someone to.
No, 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 no. I'm, I'm just saying there's.
Enforce deed restrictions, just like.
In general, right.
Right.
But we could, you could do that in a private manner.
Yeah.
I know, I know what you're saying. I'm just.
It's like an interesting thing that a lot of private lawyers can advise people on, but I can't.
Right, 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 right.
I don't know.
I'm just trying to say there may be other ways to go at this, if there isn't a city way to go after it.
Oh, I mean, and, and plat restrictions are enforced by the fellow plat owners. So, this is a private issue. If someone, this, the city not enforcing a private restriction in a plat has nothing to do with what private parties can do to enforce their property rights against one another.
And voluntarily.
So, it's.
But, I mean, privately and voluntarily.
Right. Or if, or if a neighbor violates their plat restriction, it's the neighbor's dispute.
Why do we, why do we not, why does, not, we is Denedin, but why do cities not enforce what the plat says?
Because it's a private interest. It is a private requirement. It's a, just like HOAs have private deed restrictions. Those are enforced by the HOA. They are not city, they're not city regulations. They are not, and you can't, you can't impose a different setback than allowable by your code. The, they're, they're, they're private agreements between two parties, just like the city doesn't enforce other private agreements in every other context. It's a private issue, not a public issue. The city regulates through its land development.
But I mean, I think the way we're looking at it, though, is it's, it's not a, a general issue. It's a development issue. So, it's a building issue. So, it would just seem that.
Well, we approve the plats.
The city.
Right. That's why I'm trying to.
Right, we do.
Your approval of the plats is not imposing a different setback than what's required, but if you want to change the setbacks of your code, then you change those in your land development code, in your government regulations. They are not, you don't enforce private restrictions, and there's, there's, by the way, there's oodles of them. Some include plats, some include you won't paint your house a different color, some include you will use this building material. I mean, deed restrictions and plat restrictions are private agreements between private parties, that just like other private agreements, the city has no role in participating.
But again, we approve a plat at a formal meeting, so how does that not make us a party to?
You approve them for technical compliance in accordance with Chapter 177 of Florida statutes, and you accept all public dedications in the plat. So, public dedications and easements are different. You do enforce those, because they have a public interest and benefit.
And when you look at that language, that's what we're, we're citing off.
Yeah, could meet or exceed our goals, what we're saying.
You know, the important thing is, too, is that this particular area was platted, I think, right around the turn of the century, and it has a requirement that you can't have African Americans.
It's 1920.
The what?
There's a requirement that you can't have African Americans in that subdivision, on that underlying plat. Yeah.
And most of them do from that time. It is a terrible thing.
Wow, I didn't mean to go there.
No, it is a terrible thing.
Wow, it went dark.
It's not enforceable by anyone after 1964. We know that.
I mean, yeah, it's unconstitutional, but they're very old.
What's in a plat?
And how far-reaching deed, plat, and other private restrictions that private parties can choose to place on themselves, and that's their own private thing, but what's the public issue? And that's what the city is always looking at. We have technical requirements in the statutes that are reviewed and applied. We have the requirements of our code that it has to meet. If they impose something extra on themselves, then that's for the neighbors to dispute if they don't, if they don't follow.
They don't like it, they have to.
And the city actually goes one step further, and in issuing the permit, if there are underlying restrictions and things like that, they issue a disclaimer to them. We are looking at the public, these issues. If you do this, and it ends up inviting a lawsuit from your neighbor, the city's permit is not giving you an authority to go out and not be sued by your neighbor. That could still happen. Does that make sense? A weird way of explaining it. But basically, they, the city gives people the, the information upfront, that you may need to go talk to your neighbors about what you're about to do, because you may be violating your private plat restrictions.
But, but if you're saying it's not per se public, then it could be a voluntary private thing among the neighbors.
People choose, yes, people choose all kinds of different things to do with their properties, and that, that don't involve the city. And that could be legally enforceable as, between those two parties, but it's, where is this, what's the city's role involvement? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we're, we're all maybe looking.
And you can, and if it's a setback issue, Mayor, then the way that the city regulates that is by amendments to the code. And so, you all can amend your, your setbacks in different zoning categories.
But keep in mind, you're amending it for all the houses in that zoning category.
For the whole zoning category, right. We treat everybody the same.
Right.
I can always tell when Jen- I can always tell when Jennifer has an opinion.
Unless you do some kind of overlay, can you do an overlay there?
Fact.
Like, at one time, we were trying to do a historic overlay, or something when John Hubbard was still here, and we were talking about the Fenway and how far, we didn't want the Fenway coming out too far either.
That's a bit too hypothetical, I think, for me to answer on the dais, but the, you can do overlays, you still have to treat all similarly situated property the same.
But are, are, also, the overlay you just adopted says you can't lay an overlay over an overlay.
That's true, so you'd have to be, it'd have to be, you could maybe do a historic district along, which would be different along Edgewater. I mean, I'm trying to look at all the permutations, I know people, but again, I keep going back to maybe if the neighbors would get together and decide a private way that we could all agree, that we would say, you know, "If my house is sold or torn down or whatever, I'm, I'm going to put this in my personal restrictions, that it will not, that it will have this deep setback."
And I think to the Mayor's point, though, that maybe we should get the committee together and have them call the neighbors together and have the discussion.
Correct, yeah, that's what I think.
And we, you know, I would be, I'd have to talk to Francis about notification, helping them out with that, too.
And have them get together at the Fenway or whatever and say, "Would you be willing to look at this voluntarily?" You went out first on, you remember, to President Street and said, "Would you voluntarily rezone at that time?" Remember, we tried that before we went to the overlay. But I think this would be a sort of a community discussion about, you know, how could we privately handle this if we cannot publicly do it?
Yeah, and I think actually, if I may, Mayor, that it'd be much better if, if the residents in the area facilitate that meeting, now that I'm thinking about it, because, you know, the minute we do a direct mail notification, it's going to be our effort, and we don't want to do that.
That's fine. I mean, I, I've turned my mind around and around and around and around on this issue.
Well, this is the first time I really understood the legal separation, and I appreciate it, it helps me, so I, at least, you know, then I can be educated when I'm talking to the residents there, so I get it.
Anything on your liaison positions?
Uh, no, nothing with Tampa Bay Regional Planning because of the conference, the Sustainability Conference, we didn't have a thing last time. We have one Monday coming up. Tryna Blue Jays have fallen into second place.
Uh-oh.
Below the Yankees, which is even more, you know, sorry, any Yankee fans out there, I don't mean to, you know, be mean to you, but anyway, so we'll, we'll follow that, but no, nothing, nothing new on that. Getting geared up for, I think, the chamber trip in June, so...
Commissioner Twunga, any liaison position reports?
Yes, Dunedin Cares. Inasmuch as Dunedin Rotary Club North was doing a, and is doing, a fundraiser and a golf tournament in the Dunedin Golf Club on May 13, and inasmuch as, and we're doing that for organizations and activities that we support in Dunedin, inasmuch as Dunedin Cares was interested and also doing a golf tournament, they have joined our golf tournament. So if anyone's interested in any fundraising for the Dunedin Cares and/or for, obviously then for the Dunedin Rotary Club, you can just look at either one of the Facebook pages or, or information from either one of those organizations. Additionally, Dunedin Cares is still looking for volunteers for Saturday morning from 9:00 to 12:00, and, and they're full speed ahead. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Where, at 9:00 to 5:00, is, I saw something that they're gonna have something Wednesday at First Press, so...
Yeah, they're doing, they're continuing to do the churches.
PB&J thing?
Yeah, oh, the PB&J is, is now over, is up, at my understanding, but I might say that officially, I don't represent that exact information, but, but, but they are using the churches, the four churches here in, in Dunedin to help, to help with the, not only the collection, but then the dispersment.
I got nothing, I, I think I gave you guys a little, low down the ladder at the last meeting, so I have nothing new.